I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll call the room. Councilman Poole?
Here.
Councilman Cotton?
Here.
Councilman Littles? Councilman Watson?
Here.
Councilman Barton?
Here.
Mayor Lovelace?
Here.
The quorum is present. And approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
May I offer motion we approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Barton. Any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, minutes are approved.
And I want to welcome all our visitors here today. I see we have ministers and paper company and Coastal Gateway and people that wave and are nice to people, and I'm glad y'all are all here today. I have already spoken to Mr. Hilton Hale, who was the first recipient of our Top of the Town Award, and he does understand that I've had an operation on my foot and I can't get around very well, but I have asked Connie Baggett, our program director, to present this proclamation to the city to him. And congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. This proclamation is part of our Bruton Reborn Project. It's a project that started in July, and each month we have three tasks that we try to get everybody in the city to take part in, and to help build community in our city. This month, look up when you're walking, greet people, and sit on your porch. That's our three tasks for this weekend. Mr. Hilton Hale will fill at least two of those very well. As part of that program, we ask people to nominate people who are friendly in our town, our friendliest folks, and his was one of the first names that was nominated through our Facebook page. And if you're not on our Facebook page, I encourage you all to like him. One of the first nominees was Mr. Hilton Hale, and before 30 minutes was done, he had more than 45 likes on his nomination. Nobody ever came close. Nobody ever even came close to catching up to the number of votes he had. Well over 100 votes through our Facebook page just in about a few days. So it's with great pleasure that we present our first Top of the Town Award to him for embodying the spirit of friendliness, of greeting others, and hospitality that we want everyone in group to share. This proclamation reads as follows: To Hilton Hale, in recognition of outstanding public service on behalf of the city, whereas the city of Bruton seeks to commend and encourage civic pride, sudden hospitality among its residents, and whereas Hilton Hale, a lifelong resident of Bruton, exemplifies this spirit of goodwill and serves as an unofficial breeder for both city residents and visitors alike, and whereas Mr. Hilton Hale demonstrates his love of people, spending countless hours bringing joy and cheer to those who pass along State Road 41 through our city, and whereas Mr. Hale has been an inspiration to his family, friends, and pastors, five have been triumphed over his own personal circumstances. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Bruton, Alabama, that Hilton Hale is awarded the title Top of the Town as part of the Bruton Reborn Project. Proclaimed this 12th day of August, 2013. Thank you so much for being the kind and friendly person that you are. Very kind.
Thank you.
There you go. Let's get one more, let her get one more good picture. She's looking at you right there. Thanks, sir.
All right, yeah. All right.
Congratulations, Mr. Hale.
He's gonna wave at you now.
And is, I don't see Steve Dickie, or is there a representative here for Steve? Guess we do that award at another time.
Let's hold that.
And approval of the agenda.
Copy of the agenda's up on the wall and copies here for the audience. Is there anything to be added or deleted to the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda as presented signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Ayes have it. Agenda's approved as presented.
And our next under O business would be approval of the City Fiscal Year 2014 annual budget.
May I offer motion that we approve our budget fiscal year 2014?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Yes, sir.
This budget that we're approving, does this budget have in there the, we had two budget we were working on. One was including a pay raise for city employees, and the other budget did not include the pay raise for city employees. I would like to clarify which budget that Councilman Watson is...
This budget does, our budget does not have an automatic pay raise in it. The council would have to vote again in order to award a pay raise.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, in answer to your question, the numbers show that, but it's at your command.
Right, we did approve it. Right.
So that's not, I just want to be on record, that is not automatic.
It is not, no, sir.
Okay.
Further discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, budget is approved.
And I call on Steve Uehaus to discuss the land sale power.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Approximately four months ago, I came before you and asked for you to enforce a moratorium, which would last a period of six months, on not allowing any cell tower development in the city of Bruton until a policy to manage it and oversee it could be developed. Planning Commission has been meeting, we have a cell tower or wireless telecommunications facility ordinance ready to present to you. The Planning Commission met June the 3rd, July the 1st, and July the 29th. What I have before me to present to you this evening, and you all have copies, hard copies of it on the bench in front of you, is the fruit of the labor or the result of the work from the Planning Commission or the guidance of Mr. Hines, our city attorney. This comes from the Planning Commission as a recommendation for your adoption and approval. Now, this would have to take place, this ordinance covers two facets or two components. Number one, in the Bruton Code of Ordinances, in Appendix A, the Land Use and Development Ordinance, a new article numbered 20 would have to be added to the Land Use and Development Ordinance entitled Wireless Telecommunication Facilities. In addition to that, there would be another ordinance that would have to be adopted and approved by you that would amend and restate Table 9-2 of table of permitted uses in the Land Use and Development Ordinance, and also Table 9.3, uses and permitted conditions. Now, I say all that to say that this comes to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission, but all that I can ask you to do today is to set up a public hearing time for the city council. The earliest that a public hearing could be held would be September the 9th of 2013. That would give us ample opportunity to publish it in the newspaper and then publish a synopsis, allow the minimum 15-day period of time to pass, and then our council would meet again, and there could be a public hearing on these matters in these chambers in your presence. So you have a hard copy, would advise you and encourage you to read it and look it over, and all that I can ask for to get from you today is for you to vote to set up that public hearing on September the 9th.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Cotton and seconded by Councilman Barton for that public hearing. Any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, public hearing is approved.
Thank you.
And just for continuity's sake, this is the front page of the second ordinance. That's the table of permitted uses.
And then I'd like to call on, Steve, another?
That took both off.
Okay. Right, public hearing will cover both.
I call on city clerk.
Yes, sir. Next item is the RDS Alatax Tax Revenue Enhancement Agreement. You know that RDS Alatax collects sales tax for us, but they're also in the business of looking for businesses that operate here without a license, and they're very good at finding these businesses and making them get a business license within the city. This document, if approved, would be for another three years, and what they do the first time is they take 50% of whatever the license fee is, and from then on, we get the entire fee, and then it's a dollar and a quarter for every application that's faxed through them, and I recommend that this be approved, because they've pulled in over the years at least $40,000 in extra license fees.
I make a motion. To what?
To.
To approve it? To approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Barton. Any discussion?
Correction.
Correction, Watson. Any discussion? Thank you. Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and the agreement will be executed.
Next item, I've asked Brooks Garrett to discuss this Georgia Pacific tax abatement.
Mayor, members of the council, I come to you again with good news. Georgia Pacific has requested a, is requesting a tax abatement for improvements or proposed improvements to the plant of approximately $347,700,000. Before anybody gets too excited, this is in the works. It's not a done deal, it's not, it's not been officially approved, but this is part of the approval process through the corporate system is asking for this tax abatement. This was brought before the Bruton Development Authority this morning, and the Bruton Development Authority voted unanimously to make a recommendation to the city council to grant the tax abatement. The tax abatement deals with sales tax initially and then with animal orance taxes over a 10-year period. It does not affect taxes for education, so those would not be affected. But this is a great project for Bruton if it comes through. I understand there's some competition, intercompany competition as to what project gets done and what doesn't get done based on what benefits the company the most, but the local people are really behind this project and are pushing to get it done. We've got Jeff Joyce here, who's the general manager, Suzanne Anderson, who's the public affairs, head of public affairs at the local plant, and Jay Belafonte is a regional tax manager, and he's going to make some additional comments on behalf of Georgia Pacific. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any, or you want to wait till Jay gets through, and maybe between he and I, we can answer any questions you might have.
Good afternoon. As you guys may know, I am the new tax manager out of Atlanta for the Alabama facilities, including the Bruton facility, and I'm very excited to tell you guys about a potential opportunity we have here in Bruton to put in a new capital investment. It's a 10-year property and sales and use tax abatement, with the exception of the school taxes, of course, those will stay in place. The proposed abatement will be for a 10-year period. It'll abate about $7 million in property taxes and about $6 million in sales and use taxes. It's expected to take two years to complete, and there will be a significant amount of personnel coming to Bruton to help with the project itself. I don't have too much more to tell you at this point. Actually, it is a proposed project, but we are very optimistic and excited that it might come through.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just make one other comment. I'd like to thank Marshall Rogers and Laura Swift also for their input and help in getting this project underway. Just think of what 500, 600 people, additional people, workforce in Bruton will do over a two-year period in making your decision. So we think it's a great project and one that we hope the council will approve.
And if you approve it, there's a resolution 13-0812, which is part of the application. That's what you'll actually be approving also.
Do you need a motion, then?
Please.
I make the motion, and we approve this tax abatement.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Poole, seconded by Councilman Cotton to approve. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Mr. Brooks, I think the gentleman next to you says somebody, they'll bring in additional people. We're also hiring local also, right? The local people, you probably looked at.
There's certain skill set that'll be required, and I'm sure they'll hire many local folks to meet the skill set.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, tax abatement is approved. If you would wait till afterwards, we'll get everything signed when we get them to you.
And we need approval of the accounts payable for August 2013. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Watson. Any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I don't... I do not see Dr. Hayes here today, but if you have not had the opportunity to go to the cemetery and see the new columbarium that was installed, you need to take the time to go over to Union Cemetery, and I would say Dr. Hayes did a wonderful job in this whole committee in bringing that product to fruition.
I have just a couple of things to say. That monument has 96 12-inch by 12-inch by 12-inch, we'll call them niches there, where we're going to allow people to emplace urns of cremains. There is a thought that a one large urn and one of those niches can be placed. I've spoken to both Cravers and Williams, and they have a catalog where they can get smaller urns, so if a family wanted to put two urns in one of those niches, that could be done. We're going to leave that to the families to decide. We're also considering the cost of $1,000 per 12-inch by 12-inch niche. There are black granite doors on these niches, and what would happen is we would issue the family a door, take the door to the monument people where it could be sandblasted. We did think about bronze plaques, like at the Hollywood Cemetery in California, it's, they wouldn't all look the same. So we'll let the family take the door and have it blasted. We'll put a blank door in while they're doing that, and when they have the ceremony, we'll switch doors out there with them. That's the thought right now. But if the council would like to consider that $1,000 per niche, I mean, you don't have to make a decision now, but that's what we came up with, that's what we're thinking about. There'll have to be an ordinance looking at all this anyway eventually.
Thank you, John.
But that's the short version right now.
I'd also like to discuss this atrium money, that's the paving money that the state of Alabama awarded to cities and counties, and in round three, there are three rounds, and in round three, the only two that applied for money in Escamby County was the city of Bruton and Escamby County. The state awarded the county $5,57,000 and some cents in round three, and I'm happy to say that, and they left it us, left it up to us to negotiate with the county, and which we did, we had several meetings, and Bruton was going to receive $2,250,284.95. And I do appreciate all the work that the county did and how helpful they were in working with us. There was some formulars involved in this, in this number of, that's probably going to have some sense. It was good to work with them, and David Souchen especially. I call on Johnny Ainsley to do miscellaneous pitches and discussion of the...
We have, well, Mr. Johnny Watson was supposed to be here to talk about the geocaching, and he's also ill and not here, but I'd like to call on Connie Baggett again to give us a short synopsis.
Good afternoon again, gentlemen. Mr. Watson was unable to be with us this afternoon, but he did send greetings to all of you and a sincere thank you to every one of you for all your support in the recent geocaching event that we held last weekend in our parks downtown in the new property. There were more than 60 people here, more than 50 of them were from out of town, had never been to Bruton before, and they were able to search for geocaches that we sponsored all over town and in a competition at the new park property. They all had rave reviews about Bruton and all planned to come back and do some more geocaching here and attend other events that we have. So again, thank you very much for your support of our projects, and we're making Bruton known internationally in geocaching circles, so thank you again.
Thank you.
The council has been working very hard over the last several months to get bids on recycling of the garbage in Bruton, and I'll let Johnny Ainsley discuss that.
Well, right now, you know, the trash request for proposals has been published, and believe it or not, we have five agencies that want to put in a proposal, which is due August 21st. Two of them, one allied, which you know well, and another one called Titan Waste out of Milton, has shown an interest in doing the recycling. Both of them have similar programs. We're looking probably at a 30-yard dumpster, which would be placed, we're not quite sure yet, but people would recycle their items minus glass in this dumpster, and then, of course, they would come take it away. We don't know what the fees are, we don't know what the logistics are, but we're working on getting permission to place this somewhere in the Jiffy Lube area, which is a wide open area and can be monitored easily, rather than at a city building where it might be hidden. But that's what we're looking at right now. Details to follow.
Thank you, John. Any other miscellaneous things?
Yes, we should have a Ms. Shakira Bradley in the audience who would like to request the use of Jennings Park.
Hello, my name is Shakina Bradley, and I'm here on behalf of Christ Kingdom Ministry Center, and we are a non-denominational Christian church located on 1602 Douglas Avenue in Bruton, and we would like to request the use of Jennings Park on Labor Day, Monday, September the 2nd, 2013, for a Friends and Family Day picnic, and we will have food and music, singing, and other activities for children. And we'd like to request the park from, she said 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., but the exact times would probably fall sometime between those times for us to clean up and take down and all that.
Okay, are you going to have any tents out there or anything?
Tents, like...
Anything you're going to have to stake down?
Probably not.
Okay. I just wanted to warn you, in some areas, there are water lines and everything, you don't want to put the tent stakes in too deep out there. All right.
May I offer need a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Barton, seconded by Councilman Watson. Any discussion?
You're not requesting the whole park, you're just going to have an area in the park, people will still be able to use the park.
Yes, yes, just a little small portion of the park.
I understand.
Whichever side we can use.
I have two questions for you.
Okay.
Number one is, give me the hours that you plan to you be in the park?
Um...
Can you be specific?
Be specific? Are there certain hours?
No, you just tell me what your hours are. What are your hours?
7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
And I need your date again.
Monday, September 2nd, 2013.
It's Labor Day, basically.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and use is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further business. Well, Dr. Hayes is here, if you want to hear just a couple of things from him.
Sure, Dr. Hayes.
He surprised me.
I came to talk to you just a second about the columbarium and ask for your approval. John and I have talked with Mr. Langloy, who we bought the columbarium from, and he recommended the charges that we should make for buying one of the niches, and it has been recommended that we charge $1,000. We have 96 niches in the columbarium, and each one will hold two urns, so a man and his wife or any two members could be interred in one niche. So we feel like, the other thing I might say is that we researched the area, and this will be below the price of any in this area, and we're not in this to make a lot of money and the, but anyway, we thought that, or John says that we have to bring this before you so this can be legally put in.
And John brought it up to us earlier, that we have to do it by ordinance, correct?
Did you? You've already done it? Okay.
I didn't get them both.
But I did say when you weren't here earlier that it is a beautiful columbarium, and I congratulate you on what a excellent job you did.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I was going to say, I appreciate very much, of course, John, y'all already got a lot of trust in him, but I appreciate the trust that you put in me to invest that much money, you know, but I think that there's no question that it's going to be a tremendous advantage for the, an addition to the cemetery, and another thing, this, I was made aware at the time we were putting up the columbarium out there that day, that we have a new crematory going in, in...
Monroeville?
Monroeville, at this time, so the only other choice we had was in Pensacola, but this will help us too. So the other thing John and I wanted to tell you is, you're going to be asked a lot of questions, and I'm not going to labor this point, but anyway, the people are going to ask you questions about, well, how do we do this? And I'm in the process of making up a brochure for down at the city hall, and we're going to get this printed up, and they can come by and pick one up, and it will have the charges and what they have to go through and just how to do it, but we don't want to be in the urn business. Now, Mr. Langloy said that a lot of people that owned columbarium sold their urns too, but John and I think that that's just a little more than we want to get into, and they can get them from the local area burial places. And so... And so if you have any questions, I don't know anything else other than, I think it's a tremendous addition to our cemetery, and I appreciate the trust y'all put in us.
Since, since he's going to have a brochure, I think it'd be wise to get a motion to approve that $1,000 fee.
Okay.
And everything else can be worked out. It's just a logistical thing, if you're comfortable with that.
This is, I talked to, just due today, and she recommended someone here in town to do it, and she thinks they would do a good job. And we have kind of planned to make a small brochure with some, a picture and a few things, and then the rules and this sort of thing, so, and the cost and everything. So if you have to approve that, then...
Is that a recommendation from the cemetery committee?
Pardon?
Is that a recommendation from the cemetery committee?
Yes, yes. I, I didn't know that we had to get that approved, but yes, we'd like to have that approved if you so agree with what we would like to do. And I think that would save the city hall a lot of someone there going over every time we have...
I actually have two people on a waiting list now, as a matter of fact, believe it or not.
Right about the same, but I remember when, and you guys went back in, and we did those books about the fees, that we increased the fees. There's a lot more to tell than just saying, you know, we're going to book a sure up, we got to put in a little regulation thing we got, don't that fall over?
They have to have an ordinance eventually to, to codify this?
That's what I was getting at. We have to have an ordinance.
Yes. But if you would pre-approve the, the cost, then the rest of it is just logistical stuff? What to do with the door, how to get a deed, how to buy the thing, where do you go, this kind of thing?
I make a motion to approve it, but $1,000.
Excuse me, Coach. Wait a minute. So you're saying the columbarium, the space they buy at $1,000 is a reasonable price, what you're saying, right?
Yes, I think it's very reasonable, and I'd like to say that, you know, y'all approved the budget, and I think y'all know what the budget was, don't you, what we, you approved it for? Well, we came in about $11,000 or $12,000 under the money spent for the, what you approved. The only thing we have to do now is to landscape it, and we're going to wait till the fall when, and we think we can do that for probably between $1,000 and $1,500, something like that, to landscape the area where the columbarium is. But...
Okay, Coach. I'd make a motion to approve it, $1,000. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Watt, or Cotton, signed by Councilman Watson. Any more discussion? Counselman Poole?
Yes.
Counselman Cotton?
Yes.
Counselman Watson?
Yes.
Counselman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and we'll get on with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only other thing I'd like to say that the council has been concerned with, we've had citizens looking at the interest rate that some of these title loan places are charging, some as high as 150% interest, and we'll report to the citizens of Bruton if, if in fact, we have any jurisdiction on that or not in the future. Any further, Ms. Laney's business?
It's because they're not paying.
I have one thing. We, we've talked about this, and I know probably because council meetings move slow because we only meet two times a month, and we have discussed of instigating and to come up with a comprehensive policy on our city employees' vehicles being brought back to the city shop and limiting the personal use of our employees with their city vehicles, saving taxpayers' money, not furnishing transportation. And I want to proceed on with pursuing that policy, but until we can get a permanent policy in place that specifies what we would like to do as the city council, I'm concerned, and I would like to bring up, and I would like to make a motion that pending the implementation of a comprehensive policy, that all city vehicles be brought back to the city shops and to the city garages, with the exception of department heads and people that are on call.
Well, you know, we haven't got into that detail of a discussion yet, and to try to do by motion the use of over 100 city employees, the use of the vehicles at this point, I think is a bit premature. Yes, we have discussed and looked at the city of Gaston's policy and several other cities' policies of use, and they all are different. I just think that it might take a couple of workshops to try to come up with something that...
I got a point of order. Now, there's a motion on the floor. Am I correct? I second that motion.
No second.
You don't need a second? His recommendation was in form of a motion to do this. In order to have a motion...
You have a point of order, so it's still open.
Thank you. Okay. I want to get a clarification of what he was saying. Thank you for the correction. I'll go second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Poole, signed by Councilman Watson. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I made the motion. Father's discussion will be, I do want to continue this, this dialogue, but I'm trying to come up with just a temporary measure that can give us something at this point, and maybe this will cause us to come back to the table and come up with a policy of this.
Can we, can I table this motion? What do we have to do to do that?
You can't table a motion.
No, the motion's on the floor.
You got to...
Let me ask the city clerk. Hang on a second.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the table, and we'll have to...
If this is passed, again, I don't know, as the chief executive officer of the city, how the city is going to operate, but maybe you have a good idea on how, if we pass this, without a set of, of, of rules, how, how we can, how we can do this at all. You know, and off to, shooting from the hip is generally not a good way to manage anything, especially a city. As I said, we've, we've discussed this before, you know, and to try to bring it up in an open meeting, to try to, to take a city the size that we have, the size budget that we have, and try to make a quick decision, I think is premature.
Okay. I got something to say to what he just said. Parking a vehicle after hours does not have nothing to do with the day-to-day operation of the city.
We operate 24 hours a day.
The police officers that have, we got 25 police departments. They're there all day. We got guys on standby. They're called, they're called out, they come out. A department head, granted, he don't have to come out at nighttime, he got somebody there up under him, like a standby person. If any issue come up, they call the city hall, police department, and they call a standby person, they go out and do it. The day-to-day operation does not have to be, a street department will work at night, they don't work on roads at night. Some of the police officers, they don't work at night. You have, if you have a shift, they work. So I don't see what they got to do with the day-to-day running up, up the city.
I didn't think that we could vote on anything unless it...
If anything to do with money, of course, we can vote on.
On the agenda.
You have a business?
Hold on just a minute. I, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud through parliamentary procedure. My intent is not to cripple the city of Bruton. My intent is to make sure that employees that have no authorization to be carrying city vehicles home and using them for transportation and personal business are not done after hours. It's, it's, it's done, you know, I don't, I don't...
I have no problem in you forcing that opinion in us and me trying to enforce that.
Well, let me, let me say this. If, 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 let me, let me do this. I will withdraw my motion if I can do that, provided that, you know, this problem is addressed, because I'm, you know, it's, it's, it's a concern to me, and if we had to have to, I don't have a problem with having workshops and coming out here and do this, but, you know, I would like for this to, this is a priority of, of, you know, I've expressed my desire, and y'all know how I feel about this.
Well, I appreciate you making a motion to withdraw your motion. And I, we will bring up the next workshop.
Other council members, would that be to your satisfaction down there?
Are you correct in saying that? Are you correct? I had the motion on the floor, motion was second, went for discussion.
So now you're saying, the rest of the person go back, he withdraws his motion.
Before I let this go, I make a motion. I understand what we're saying. This discussion that people had before, and we discussed it, and we're not making no accomplishments. I want it to be put into the records.
Wait, wait.
We're not making no, we're not making a headwind on this thing. We haven't done anything.
We passed this just several years ago, where that they could take the vehicle.
Coach, you passed this several years ago. We might want to change it. Thought about that?
Evidently, it ain't working.
It's not. Surely...
I don't see that bigger problem with it.
Coach, how can, we're not discussing this on open channel.
Well, well, that's what...
All right. The motion, we pull, we draw, we're through with it. Thank you. Nothing else?
Any other, Ms. Laney's business?
A motion, we adjourn.